Good evening, and welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. Let me just first say, please silence your cellphones. I have to really say this now, we have a bunch of teenagers here. But you guys actually know how to silence your cellphones, which is an advantage you have over the older folks. But first do that, and then the other thing I'm going to mention is that we do have a request to continue the Flatiron item, Flatiron Building item under public hearings, so we're not going to be hearing that tonight, but I just wanted to say that right up front in case anyone was here and didn't get the message on that one. So now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item on our agenda tonight is our honor to recognize the City of Asheville Youth Leadership Academy students, which is why we have so many folks here tonight. And I am first going to tell you just a little bit about the KLA program, which is the City of Asheville Youth Leadership Academy. We call it KLA. It was created in 2007, and it prepares Asheville's youth for future employment. The program focuses on leveraging relationships with nonprofit agencies, businesses, and the community to provide meaningful, career-oriented internships for students. KLA leaders are motivated high school students who attend Asheville High School, Silsa, or Buncombe County schools, and are recommended by community partners, including the Asheville City Schools Avid Program, my daddy's sister taught me that, Vamos, and the Irwin High Career Academy. The majority of KLA students will be the first in their families to attend college, and many have overcome significant barriers to reach that goal. KLA's vision is that all Asheville's youth have opportunities to learn the career demands, skill sets, and qualifications necessary for future employment. In short, the purpose is to support students as they find their purpose. Long-term, the hope is to encourage students, to encourage talented young students to return to Asheville after college while inciting their passion to grow our entire community. To support this goal, the city has now developed a three-month fellowship program intended for KLA alumni who have earned a college degree and returned back to the city to launch their career. Before I invite two of the current KLA students to make a few remarks, I would like to thank the entire group of students who are here in the council chamber tonight. This year, you have taken a deep dive to learn about racial equity. You have created clubs that support your peers. You have mentored middle school students. You have spoken out about the achievement gap and the environment. You have balanced the demands of a rigorous course load, held part-time jobs that support your family, earned honors in athletics and extracurricular activities, and applied and were accepted to colleges across the state and region. We, as a city, are so proud of you, KLA class of 2019. Now, if I can please ask Iva Tyson and Jennifer Silva Romero to please come up to the podium to say a few words.
It's really nice to be here today. Thank you guys for your time. So, the City of Asheville Youth Leadership Academy, known as KLA, has opened so many opportunities for me as a student. It really helped me engage with my community and helped me work with parent U when Martha Alcala Williams, my supervisor, last summer. I really got to see what Asheville was like and meet people and really network with other people around me that I know will follow me throughout my high school career and even college career. KLA itself is a really close family. We, as peers, really tend to help each other out. With the help of Ms. Erica, all of this has been possible. And I also want to thank my supervisor, all of you, for this amazing program that offers teens such a great opportunity to really work around their community and discuss issues that they feel need to be discussed in their community, because as youth, our voices are really never heard as much as adult voices are heard. So this program really offers that door to open for us to really discuss issues we believe need to be fixed and what want to see changed. So, once again, thank you so much for this wonderful program. Thank you guys for your time.
My name is Iva Tyson, and I'm a junior at the School of Inquiry and Life Sciences at Asheville. I want to start by saying thank you to all of you for allowing this amazing opportunity for myself and my fellow peers, as we have learned a lot about ourselves and each other's and about different things in our city. Last summer, I was granted the opportunity to intern at the YMCA for Nutrition. Within this internship, I was able to go to a lot of different housing communities around Asheville and be able to feed students who aren't able, who don't have access to food over the summer, that oftentimes rely on school food. And in doing so, we also taught them about nutrition, as many predominantly African-Americans, we don't necessarily always know about nutrition, we don't get taught that. And fortunately, this summer, I have the opportunity of interning at the French Pond Pediatrics. Being a part of KLA these past two years has allowed me to identify and grow and seek my own leadership abilities. And I've grown up with a single parent, my mother. She's worked very hard to raise me into who I am today. And being a part of KLA, I've been able to learn a lot about myself, and not having this opportunity, I wouldn't have been able to learn that. So, once again, I want to say thank you. In addition, I've been able to apply my own leadership abilities within our community. For example, this past January, I started my own club through the IRL program at Asheville Middle School. It was called Leaders in Action. And the whole purpose was to teach students what leadership is and what a leader looks like, and that you can be a leader, it doesn't take a superhero. And in addition, I just truly appreciate my KLA family. I appreciate all of the opportunities that we've been able to have, and thank you, Ms. Erica, and thank you to all of you for allowing this opportunity.
So, because we have a little extra room on our agenda tonight, we thought we would go ahead and present you all with your certificates. I will say, I do want everyone to know, we did have a chance to all attend a reception in your honor before this meeting tonight. We just did that, and we got to hear a lot more from several of you about your experiences and how this experience has meant so much to you, and for some of you, it was even life-changing, and also how much you appreciate Ms. Erica, who is your fearless leader here, and so much more, really, it sounds to me. So, we're going to meet you here at the lectern, but when your name is called, come on up and receive your certificate, and I'll head on down.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for being here tonight and allowing us to share these wonderful accomplishments. And students, I'm going to call your name, and if you could come up and get your certificate from me and shake Mayor Mayhew's hand, and then start moving, kind of, we're going to make a circle here for a photo line, okay? KLA art. Okay.
You can hold that mic, I can get help there.
Okay. Wonderful. So, let's start with Dalvin Battle. Come on up, Dalvin. Of course, he's on the inside. All right, Shayla Bautista Perez. Shaquell Hill. Markell, sorry. I reverse that every single time.
Do you guys want to squeeze in and do a picture?
Yeah.
Are there any other parents that have...
Should we stand up?
Yeah, I was going to say...
I think we should stand up. Oh, come on, get up, get up, get up. Oh, we do? You guys, we're going to do another layer. Maybe...
What did you just say?
That's what I thought you said.
They make, I still say one thing. So, sorry, everybody, I do have one thing to say. So, the KLA students meet with me once a month on Saturdays usually, and they've been working on social justice action plans, and one of our Saturdays, we spent visioning what they would like Asheville to look like, the City of Asheville. So, I would like to submit this to the official record, so you know what the students would like. So, Ashley Cooper trained me on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, and just to note, we had even more KLA students who had conflicts tonight that were tracking some other events tonight, so the class is actually a little bit bigger than that, but that was a good representation. So, the second item under Proclamations is Building Safety Month, and Councilmember Hain will give the proclamation. I want to take this opportunity to recognize Mark Matheny for being named the Building Official of the Year by ICC Region Eight. And it's Ben, yeah.
So, first, let me, I'm going to invite her to say a couple of things real quickly, if that's okay, Councilmember.
Yes, absolutely.
So, first, I want to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing the importance of Building Safety Month by doing this proclamation. You've done it in years past, and it means a lot to the department, to the staff, and to the community. I also want to thank the City Manager's Office for their continued support of Development Services. They've always been supportive and very confident in our department, and we appreciate that as well. I do want to recognize a few folks, and I'm asking them to come up for the proclamation. We have a couple of staff members from Development Services here. We have Misty Light. Misty, so Misty didn't want to come up, but I'm going to have her come up anyway. Please. Misty is our business services specialist, which means she makes things happen and get done, so Misty's very important to the department. I also want to recognize Ann Graham. Ann has been with the city for many years now. Ann is our plan review coordinator, so she is responsible for the building plan review, so when things come in for permitting, Ann helps those get done and get out the door. Also, I want to recognize Jay Icon. Jay is our inspections coordinator, and I just found out today that Jay is retiring on June 30th. So, that's, I'm super happy for Jay, but that's a huge loss for the city. Jay has a lot of experience and really makes my life easier every single day, so thank you, Jay. And then, I'm also going to recognize Kathleen. Where's Kathleen? Mark Matheny's spouse and significant other, and all the good things. Yep, we give Kathleen a lot of credit for that.
Come on up.
Come on up, Kathleen, you're important. And then, I finally want to recognize Mark Matheny, who is the chief building official for the City of Asheville. Mark is like Asheville's version of Sherry Berry, just without the picture. Mark's name is on every permit and every certificate of occupancy that comes out of the door. There's a lot of permits and a lot of COs, so people probably know his name, but are just not sure why they know his name exactly. And Mark, I want to really recognize him for his accomplishment. The Building Safety Officer of the Year, which was presented by the ICC Region Eight, that's a four-state region, so that's the number-one person in four states, so that's really impressive, that's something I'm really proud of and glad to point to Mark and his accomplishments. Mark's combination of technical, interpersonal, and leadership skills are extremely important to Development Services. He's able to navigate the world of regulatory environments and difficult decisions, but do it with a level of interpersonal relationship building and leadership that I think makes our department very successful. So, thank you for that, Mark. And I do think, before we do the proclamation, I think Mark was going to say a few comments just about building safety in general, if that's okay? Mark, if you'll come on up, please.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much. This is a great honor. I really do appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's support for all of our efforts, right? Because it's really about everything that surrounds us. And I'd like to just, on building safety, and we've got a great proclamation coming, beyond the small pieces that you guys hear now and again, the phone and the emails, I always try to rein people into the big picture, right? The general public has an inherent belief that their surroundings and the buildings that they are in are safe, right? That's whether it's a grocery store, your doctor's office, an accessory dwelling unit, a movie theater, your choice place of worship, and even, most importantly, the front porch of your home. As a result of monitoring building and construction standards, which are the building codes, buildings perform better before, during, and after an emergency, whether that is natural or man-made. This allows homeowners to get back into their homes more quickly. It allows businesses to become operational in a timely manner, and both of those combined are great benefits to the individual community, into the region, and to the state as a whole. And that's really what building safety is all about, and that's what we, this great team and this great organization that we have, our city, really support. So, I just want to thank you very much for all of it.
All right, so I'm going to read this proclamation here. "City of Asheville proclamation, whereas the City of Asheville is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, and whereas our confidence is the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization, whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety. And whereas no code, no confidence, the theme for Building Safety Month 2019 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction. Now therefore, I, Esther E. Mannheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Building Safety Month in the City of Asheville, and encourage citizens to consider the commitment to improve building safety and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments."
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I know there's one item on the Consent Agenda that will, there'll probably want to be some public comment, but first, can I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Second. Okay. And I'm going to recognize Councilmember Brian Haines here to read the resolution opposing offshore drilling, which is item B on the Consent Agenda.
Excuse me. "Whereas the City of Asheville is a climate leader and understands the importance of transitioning away from fossil fuels to a renewable energy economy for climate stability, and whereas we in western North Carolina value the Atlantic Ocean for recreational, commercial, and educational activities, all of which support our state's economy, and whereas North Carolina's ocean economy contributed 2.1 billion to the GDP in 2013 and an estimated 43,385 jobs, and whereas our city's residents value our state's ocean and coastal waters, which provide habitat to a vast array of wildlife, including endangered mammals, fish, sea turtles, and birds that depend on a healthy and clean environment. And whereas offshore oil and gas drilling and seismic exploration off the Atlantic coast put these coastal resources and the communities and industries that depend on them at risk from oil spills, intense ocean noise, and other damage, and whereas expanding offshore oil and gas drilling and seismic exploration threatens coastal stakeholders, marine wildlife, human health, and climate, and whereas the Trump administration has proposed to dramatically expand offshore oil and gas leasing in all U.S. oceans, and whereas several cities and states have taken a great, taken a stand against new federal offshore oil, seismic blasting, and gas leases off the Atlantic coast, and whereas expanding offshore drilling anywhere will deepen the country's dependence on fossil fuels and undermine its efforts to address climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions and moving toward renewable energy. And whereas the U.S. Department of Interior develops and implements a nationwide offshore oil and gas leasing program that determines the size, timing, and location of lease sales for the outer continental shelf. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Asheville that the City of Asheville supports a ban on new offshore oil and gas drilling and seismic oil exploration in federal and state waters off the Atlantic coast, and two, no new federal oil and gas leasing in all U.S. waters, including off the Atlantic coast. The clerk shall forward a copy of this proclamation to Acting Secretary David Bernhardt, Governor Roy Cooper, U.S. Senators Tom Tillis and Richard Burr, U.S. Congressmen Mark Meadows and Patrick McHenry, and any other interested parties."
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kim Roney, and I wanted to thank you for the resolution that Councilmember Haines just read. It's really important for us to take the stand with the fight against offshore drilling. But on our same consent agenda, I see that we're applying for a grant for hybrid vehicles, and I brought this up at the Transit Committee meeting last week, that that seems to go in opposition to where our stated goals are for sustainability. In 2017, the Transit Committee and the Multimodal Transportation Commission were presented with information about transitioning to a completely electric fleet within 10 years, so that we're already two years into what that would have been if we had set goals for ourselves. And the summary statement from that report reads, quote, "The city is required to purchase buses every year in order to maintain a healthy fleet. Transit vehicles are a huge capital cost that each demand significant resources to operate for their 12-year life, including approximately 120,000 gallons of diesel fuel. In order to align its commitment to climate change mitigation and carbon reduction goals, the city should resolve to transition to a zero-emission battery electric transit fleet within 10 years. I know that each one of you is aware of what's going on, we're still working towards moving..." We're still working towards moving towards our electric fleet, and there are challenges. I just wanted to let you know that we're still waiting for courageous leadership in adopting a strategy to fully electric. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Yes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Myers. I work for the Center for Biological Diversity, and I want to thank Brian, Councilmember Haines, for putting forward that resolution, opposing offshore drilling, and Mayor Mannheimer for allowing us to consider it. It is critically important that we show a united front here in North Carolina against all threats to our state economy and our state environment, as well as threats to the climate. So I know, you know, many people think, what happens on the coast, how does that affect us? But as we know, it does. Not only through our state economy, but also in our food systems, and of course, climate change knows no geographic boundaries whatsoever. So with Trump's executive order in 2017, the Atlantic seaboard is actually under direct threat of drilling for the first time. We may see some of the five-year lease plans come out as soon as this week. So this resolution is extremely timely. And you are one of the first non-coastal cities, though there are almost unanimously up and down the coast, even into South Carolina and in Florida, opposition to offshore oil drilling in the Atlantic. So again, thank you so much for putting this on your Consent Agenda. And also, I wanted to just kind of follow up on what the previous speaker said, and continue to push to lessen the demand of fossil fuels here in Asheville, and do everything we can to transition to renewable energy as quick as possible, and to lessen the demand for the oil that would come out of these wells, because that is the one way we can actually influence these policies, if not through resolution and lawmaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Just one other point here I wanted to call out. Consent E, this was the resolution for the interloper agreement with the Land of the Sky Regional Council to provide managing funds. This is to do corridor studies, excuse me, on Tunnel Road and Hendersonville Road. I just wanted to thank council for approving this. I know specifically in Hendersonville Road, which is going to be, I think, really led by the county, development and growth and traffic are issues that I hear constantly. And, you know, the growth of Asheville will likely continue, I think it's going to continue, and we need to find ways of making that rational and responsible. And I think by doing these corridor studies along Tunnel Road and Hendersonville Road, that's critical to ensuring that, you know, we do this planning in a way that is well-thought-out, that is environmentally sensitive, that is, you know, a way that helps us keep our kind of quality of life of what we like Asheville to look like going forward. So just wanted to call that out and thank council for moving this forward as well.
I've got just a quick question on G, given that Kim mentioned it. Do we, so I know one of the issues about the buses, the electric buses, is the battery life, the other is the length. And with regard to the length, I mean, are there 30-foot hybrid bus, I mean, electric buses being made anywhere in the country that we could purchase? Anybody? No, I'm seeing some head nods back there. We're still investigating. Excuse me.
I don't know the name. My name is Ken Putt, I'm the Transportation Department Director. I don't know the name of the company, but there is one company that has a 30-foot bus. But unfortunately, the cities that have been receiving those buses have been sending them back.
Sending them back. Okay. So, all right, well, so we have not, I mean, again, I just, I don't take any of the sort of hiccups that we're experiencing now to be a step back from our commitment to transition the fleet, right? At some point.
No, you're exactly right. We want to transition, but what we're trying to do too is anytime we can get an advantage of a grant, we're trying to apply for it so that we can take care of the immediate need to try to get buses in our fleet.
Right. There's no shortage of buses that we're going to have to buy, I mean, over the next 10 years, so.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, okay. We don't have any presentations and reports tonight. The first public hearing needs a motion to continue to May 28th. That's Item A. Do I have a motion to continue Item A in the public hearings' agenda to May 28th?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue Item A to May 28th? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The second is that I need a motion to continue Item D to May 14th. Do I have a motion to continue Item D to May 14th?
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to move Item D to May 14th? Yes, ma'am. Please come up and state your name, and then say your comments.
Hello, my name is Nina Tovish. I'd just like to ask for an explanation of this. I had folks lined up to come here for this, who may rearrange their lives and so forth, and I'm just wondering if you could clarify for us why this needs to be moved to May 14th?
This was a request from the developer to move it to May 14th. So they, it's not uncommon.
And they asked an hour before the hearing?
It sometimes happens like that, yes. It's not that uncommon, and we, you know, because of the statutes, you have to be on a certain timeline, so we have to provide them an opportunity to be heard within so many days from when their application was heard in planning and zoning per the statute. But they can request a continuance if, for some reason, they're not ready in that time period.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion to continue Item D to May 14th? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have two remaining items under the public hearings' agenda. The first is Item B, a public hearing to consider permanently closing an unopened right-of-way known as Commerce Street. And Mr. Chad Bandy will talk to us about this one, and I suspect the second.
You are correct. Mayor Mannheimer, members of council, thank you for this opportunity. I'll start off by saying, I'm not a future leader, I'm not environment, and I'm not an award winner, so I may not live up to everybody else that's been here tonight.
Oh, please, no. Everybody.
All right. So with that, in front of you, I'm going to move this down just a little. The first unopened right-of-way that we have in front of you tonight is an unopened right-of-way known as Commerce Street. This is actually essentially within the boundaries of Biltmore Iron and Metal off of Meadow Road, not the Commerce Street that is downtown. I want to start by saying that. The petitioner for this is Biltmore Iron and Metal, this property. That was also joined, they own, their address is One Meadow Road. The owner, Habitat for Humanity, is the owner of 33 Meadow Road, which is the white building here. This proposal was presented to all departments and all utilities, which supported. In addition, this went in front of the Multimodal Transportation Committee. The one request that Multimodal did have was that we work with the property owner to acquire a future easement on the southern part of the property for a future greenway in that area. And those conversations have started. Those have been received favorable at this point. It's not been completed, but I do think that is something that can happen, to acquire that easement for the future greenway. The current alley is a dead end, or unopened right-of-way is a dead end that serves only those two properties. It's essentially being used by Biltmore Iron and Metal at this point.
And you're done.
Yeah, Maggie wants to go.
I'm almost done. Staff is supportive, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Wrap it up, Chad.
Do we have any questions?
Trying.
Okay. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Bob Oost with Law Firm McGuire Wood and Bisset. We're working with the applicant, Biltmore Iron and Metal Company, on this. We have also been working with the adjacent property owner, and as far as I know, there's no opposition to it. But I'll be glad to answer any questions if council has them.
Any questions? Nope, okay. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? All right, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution to permanently close the right-of-way known as Commerce Street.
I need a second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We have one more of these. That is a public hearing to consider permanently closing an unopened right-of-way known as Rose
Okay, Rose Street, as shown on the map, is located north of Hazel Mill Road, off of Hansel Avenue. The petitioner is actually the Pet Vet on Patton. They are actually the owner of the two parcels to the south of the unopened right-of-way. One correction on this map, this was pulled from Google Maps, this house has since burned from the time of this imagery. So that lot is vacant now, and Pet Vet owns both of those lots. Again, like the previous closure, this was presented to staff, utilities, and also the Multimodal Commission. All were supportive of this. It's currently a dead-end alley, and the owner of 18 Hansel Avenue, which is here, has been in conversations, and they do have a drive off of Rose, but when the closure happens and the right-of-way is split, they will still have, they will not lose access to their property. So with that, staff is supportive of the closure, and be happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions? Nope, okay. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. My name is Bob Oost with the Law Firm McGuire Wood and Bisset. We represent the Pet Vet on Patton, technically Pet Vet Properties. The applicant in this matter, as Mr. Bandy said, we have been working with adjacent property owners, no opposition as far as we know. I'd like to thank Chad for his work on both these items.
Thank you.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone wishing to comment, anyone else wishing to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That concludes the public hearings' agenda. We have no unfinished business tonight. We have one item of new business, but it has been removed from the agenda by the city manager. We will hear that at our next council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that concludes our formal agenda. Now is an opportunity for public comment. If you wish, you can comment for up to three minutes on items not on our agenda. I have one person signed up to speak, and that is Reed Thompson. Okay, now Reed, anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? Hold on, let me see who, yes, no, yes. Okay, we have one gentleman in the back room.
I didn't realize that I would be presenting my client, who has a lot of children, was supposed to be here, and I know what a lot of children can do to your schedule sometimes, so he is not here in attendance. And, but what I'd like to do is just make a comment here, because, let's see, is that a proper way?
No. Side, side corner turn. There you go.
How about like that? Is that good?
Yep, that's good.
Just briefly, the client has met with a support group of a pre-application on a piece of property here, and he has a hardship in that the piece of property, which is this parcel right here, will support about 55 units and parking and so forth. And in the support group, the pre-application, we've met with him, there's, he has come to a problem that circled area right here, also illustrated right there, is the only entrance he has to his property, since every neighbor has said no for him to be able to have access to a public street. And in doing so, he can get a street and gutters on either side, and he cannot get a sidewalk. And so everybody else that we've spoken to in the city on this pre-application situation has said that they would be supportive of the project, considering, you know, the design elements that would be brought into play. But our client is having to buy this particular piece of property, which is here, for about $200,000, to be able to get a slot 28 feet wide, to be able to get a street and the gutters on either side into it. But we cannot get a sidewalk, no way. And everything has been exhausted. So I'm here today, or he would be here today, just to, because we were advised that the more, if I may say, the more empathetic route to a possibility of getting this approved would be to go ahead and go on Level 3, come through the city council, in hoping that if he provided some feedback or instances of affordable housing, or some incentives back that would be favorable to the city, that they would look upon this as not a no-go and just have, over a sidewalk, to be able to provide 55 units. Some negotiated parts of them to be affordable, which is needed. And this location is a perfect location in the city. It's halfway between, it's on Biltmore, I mean, Bravard Road, between 240 and 26. And so my role today and his today would be to just see, is there any feeling that could be fed back to my client as to the fact that if something like this would be just immediately turned down by the city council over the fact that everything else has been exhausted, everything else should be approved, back doors, safeties, all these things is there, but we're just down to a sidewalk that we cannot provide on that thing? Now, people can come out, people can come out through this route right here. It's a dedicated easement right to these particular pieces.
So that's the time on your, so we don't normally have people come do pre-zoning requests during the public comment period?
Mm-hmm.
I do know there are cities and counties that do preview before they do the final run. I would invite you to continue to work with staff to see what they need in order to be able to support it from a staff perspective. And then you certainly can reach out to individual council members and meet with them to hear what their thoughts and concerns will be. With something pretty technical in dealing with a sidewalk requirement, and whether or not a council can, you know, we'd need to understand a little bit more about, what is this, is this, what flexibility do we have, what does staff, what is staff's opinion about it? So we'd need to know a little bit more information, be able to say, yea, yea, yea.
We recognize this, and we're just hoping to preview it with you today. And we know there can't be a vote or anything like that, but we are hoping that if we bring it along, and we've had a good session with them initially, that we could get some empathy from the council to develop this property favorably and not have to worry about, you know, the one item on the sidewalk. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. Thanks for the resolution on the offshore drilling and demonstrating that Asheville is a climate leader. I think now's a good time to talk about the climate change effects that we feel here in Asheville, which is flooding, which is a result of more frequent large storms. This happens, this is happening, it's going to get worse before it gets better. And, you know, one of the effects of that, in addition to the transportation, the cleanup, and the damages that we incur here, is a greater pressure on our first responders, the fire department, emergency services, and law enforcement. And so as we look at our budget going forward, we need to look through, I don't know, a climate lens when it comes to, you know, how we, how much we're paying our, you know, the people who are protecting us, because as they are already understaffed and they're underpaid, having an unhealthy and unhappy workforce amongst the people who are protecting us is not to our best interest. So I'm just advocating for, you know, a raise that reflects the hazard pay that, you know, the first responders are working with, and a return to the retirement's benefit package that everybody in the city used to have, that was, I believe, sustainable without pressure on the taxpayers, that it was in a trust fund, and it was, you know, really rocking, and you guys had great benefits. And so those benefits need to be restored, you know. What the fire department is asking for in better retiree benefits is something that everybody had at one point and lost. So whatever mechanism was working back then, I think that you should find a way to return to that, so that, you know... to that, so that, you know, city staff is well compensated and definitely take into consideration the greater frequency and pressure on our first responders, law enforcement, and whatnot. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Fletcher, and I thought I was going to be coming here and speaking on something else. And I am just here to say that just because I don't get to give the speech that I wrote today, I will be back on May 14th. So, thank you.
We look forward to it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, you had a, yes, please.
And Mayor, thank you for, thank you for this. I just, I wanted to just be really, really brief and just make folks aware of this. Yesterday was the birthday, it was going to be the birthday of a child who was shot and killed last year, Derek Lee Jr. He would have been 13 yesterday. His grandparents had a birthday party in his honor, and I know the APD has been continuing to work on this matter. Derek was shot and killed the night, I believe it was July 1st or June 30th of last year. We've not had, APD has not been able to find out who has done this. And so I just want to, want to make sure that we don't forget Derek. There is a $5,000 reward for information that would be helpful, and I just want folks, if there's anybody out there who is able to help, who knows what happened, who has some information, to please call the, contact the APD. You can remain anonymous for doing so, and just wanted again to remember that, just remember Derek if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have a comment? Okay, so shockingly, it's not even 6 o'clock, and we don't have a closed session motion, so we are adjourned.